Good morning. Welcome to the Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Wednesday, what are we in? June 27th, 2018. We're in the Senator hearing room at Courthouse Square in Salem, Oregon. And we will begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. And welcome you to join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on our agenda is public comment. We have several people that have come here to make public comment. So why don't we take, David, why don't you go first, David Beam? And then we will have Carol and Dan and Rhonda. You're here all on the same issue? Okay, very good. So David, would you go over there and sit? Thank you.
Excuse me, county commissioners. My name's David Beam. I'm an advocate for special needs population for Salem area. And I work with the mayor and I work with Kate Brown in Oregon. I'm asking through the police department, the county and the state have a drop-in center for middle of the ill doing crime in Salem and Marion County. Because if the drop-in center would help ones that need services after five o'clock, after five o'clock, no, it's not no services at, at middle health services there for them. So I'm asking the county, I've been talking to the governor and secretary of state, and I'm thinking about get a drop-in center for each county in the state. So I'm asking for the county of Salem will get this going for the, I'm asking for a million dollars for funding for the services after five o'clock for middle of the ill and disabled. That's all I'm asking for.
Thank you, David. That's really important. We have a psychiatric crisis center here in Marion County. You're probably familiar with that, but they don't have that all over the state. So I think that's a really good goal. Because there are a lot of counties that want that.
But I'm asking, I'm asking the registrar for it too.
Uh huh. Yeah, that's excellent.
So I think that, I had it done once. Marion County had a drop-in center for disabled people. And I asked for it and I got funding for it.
That's it.
So I'm asking the next registrar if the county commissioners will help me to get it going and try it for six months. Trial and no, I'm asking for the police departments will help me.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you do, David.
Thank you.
So did you want to come up together, Rhonda? Or do you just want, okay, so Carol Dorfler?
Good morning, commissioners and staff. I'm Carol Dorfler. I live in Kaiser. I live adjacent to the river, not on the river. I am the president of the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association. And I'm here representing that association and the board and asking you to please take some real deep thoughts and consideration about what is happening along our river. There have been four separate incidents occurring where public safety was really, really in jeopardy. Prior to September 10th, there was, of 17, there was an incident that I've just come to know about involving shooting across the river down on Rivercrest Drive. September 10th of 2017, there were bullets that came through Sunset Park on Rivercrest Drive chasing people running out of the park. This is a serious public safety issue. I mean, this cannot go on. There was another incident on June the 2nd where a bullet entered a home and fell within two feet of, of the lady in the residence. If their grandchild had been there, the child would have been hit. It came through the backsplash of their kitchen. This was on Rafael. There was a gentleman who stopped and visited with a neighbor. The only name I have is Jack, but he indicated he lived on Rafael. He has said that he dug a .45 caliber bullet out of one of his trees. This is, this is unacceptable in a neighborhood. This is totally unacceptable. People have rights to bear arms, and I stand by that. But people have rights to be in their own home, in their backyards without fear. So Commissioner Carlson, you had emailed, I believe it was to Kathy Clark, the commissioners stating that you would check with the Marion County Legal Council to see what pathways we could take. And I wondered if you had received an answer from the legal counsel?
Right, so this is, I agree with you. This is a terrible situation and we need to do something about it soon. I've been following in the newspaper what happened at the city council meeting. So you've got Polk County, Marion County, City of Kaiser. So you've got three jurisdictions with, all with different levels of authority and, and different geographic areas. Before I get into this, one of the questions, and Jane Vettos is going to just kind of summarize where she's been with the research in a minute, but one of the questions that we had was, I understand it's a quarry. Is it, is it an official shooting range or is it just somebody's property that he allows people to shoot on? Do you have, because that makes a difference legally. Do you have any sense of that?
I believe it is just a place where these people are allowed to shoot.
And that's what I got a sense of too, but the paper calls it a quarry. And there are statutes that actually allow, I mean, call it a shooting range. There are statutes that actually protect shooting ranges. And so we need to kind of not call it what it isn't, all right? I mean, I think that that's really important because I think if it's just a quarry where people happen to be allowed to come on, but it has no supervision, no anything official in terms of being a shooting range, then we're kind of in a different legal realm than, than if it is a shooting range, which then there's a kind of less ability for us to act. So Polk County needs to do something on the land use side, I think on their side. But I understand that there have been some overtures to them and I'm not sure where that's at. Kaiser, I think Jane's going to talk about some things that they could do in order, because some of the properties along the river are actually in the city of Kaiser, right?
No.
They're all in Marion County?
I believe so. The dividing line between the counties is the river.
Right, but, but what does the river go, I mean, does the city of Kaiser go up to the river in Rafael?
Yes.
Right, so, so it's not county jurisdiction, it's city jurisdiction there. So our jurisdiction would be where it's not within the city limits. Then we could do some things too, I think. But Jane's, I mean, with that opening, I'm, right.
Madam Chair, you pretty much covered it. So this is a little bit complicated because we have so many jurisdictions going on. My understanding is the shooting is coming from Polk County. It's going into Marion County, into Kaiser. So I contacted the city of Kaiser attorney. Kaiser does have an ordinance prohibiting the discharge of firearms within the city limits. But the issue here is bullets coming in. So there's a couple of options that we could do. We could look, the county could look at, at having an ordinance that makes your area a shooting free zone. But since Kaiser already has an ordinance, it could amend its ordinance to prohibit shooting from or into the city limits. So we're talking about that. Those are different avenues we're exploring. If the county were to pass something that would take a vote of the residents in the, in the zone that we would create, so it's a little bit more complicated. But we are working on it and we are looking at a lot of different options.
Well, we thank you for that. We don't receive this information, so it's difficult, it's like, so what's happening? Are they going to help us? Are we going to be dodging bullets for the next two years? You know, it really is an unacceptable addition that's happening out there.
Have you received any information about the response of the property owner with the letters that were sent by Representative Post and?
No.
The mayor and?
No.
Right, so?
No. At least I have not as neighborhood association president.
Right.
They may have gone to, Rhonda, did you get anything?
Okay.
But they have not been shared with us.
Okay, yeah. That would, it would be great if we could get that information to find out kind of where it's at. We can contact, I can contact Kathy and see if she can transmit that to us.
Madam Chair, at our breakfast, was it last week with Kaiser, we saw that letter. We've seen a copy of the letter that the mayor had sent, but we didn't see the response yet.
Right.
So we're working with the city of Kaiser best we can.
Right.
To help.
Right, and I know our sheriff is aware because I included him in the, in the emails and he had, he was the one that initiated the, the ideas with our legal counsel to get that going, so. You have a lot of moral support. We just need to figure out what legal tools that we have that can actually make a difference. I don't want to have something that's just for show and doesn't do anything.
Yes, and I realize those wheels can run slowly sometimes. But this is really an urgent matter.
Absolutely.
It, it just is not a good situation.
Right.
So I thank you for your time.
Well, thank you for coming down this morning.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So Dan, is it Dietz?
I'm, I'm here on the same issue and I'm not going to, or deal with some of the same issues. But with regard to the, to the range and some of the things that have been done, we have had, and I was one of the people that made contact with the, with the property owner. And he has been cooperative and understands the issues, but there's, you know, he's stating that there's people that just come, come into his property and, and use it as, to shoot. And no, it is not a developed range. It is not a certified range. It is not a club. It is not a range for hire where people come in and pay to use it, so.
So he's saying people are trespassing on his property? Or is he allowing them to be on that? I think that's a difference.
Well, it's, it's, it's a little bit of both because it kind of started out as, okay, my kids are going to go down there and shoot. And, and he himself. And then they invite some friends to come down and shoot, who in turn later say, well, hey, I know this place, we can go shoot. And they show up with their friends. And so, and literally, I'm a combat veteran and there's some days when it sounds like there's a firefight going on down there. Starts at six o'clock in the morning, seven o'clock in the morning, goes on until 10, 11 o'clock at night because there's night shooting going on as well. As, as to the location, if you take a look at the map, there really is no safe direction to shoot in that area. I've seen where they do the shooting. It's down in the lower areas of, of where the quarry is, but it's not real deep. A mis-aimed rifle pistol at, at the proper angle will travel over the burms and through the woods and into our city parks and into our homes. Even with development, with higher burms and better range tracks if they set it up as a range, because it really is not set up as a range. Because through the military, through the police department, I'm a retired police officer, a properly developed range will have high backstops and?
And a little supervision maybe?
Yeah.
And rules.
And truly, if you're going to protect from any stray bullet, you have to have overhead protection as well. And there is not, that's not there as well. So again, the, you know, the big concern is, is that, yeah, these are private people and yet it affects three different governmental agencies. And our hope is, is that our three governmental agencies will work together to help mitigate this for the safety of, of our neighborhood. I too live along the river. I've been there for 18 years. I now have a daughter that lives on the river, three houses away from me and has four kids. And I'm very concerned about her safety. As a police officer, I understand that people have a right to shoot, but they also have an obligation to do so in a very safe manner and be respective of the rights of the neighborhood. And just because there's a river between us and them, it's still part of their neighborhood. So that's our concern again, is mainly for the cooperation of, of those three agencies as well as the property owner.
Okay. Well, I agree with you. So we will continue to try to work on this and see what we can get done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Senator Mira.
Rhonda?
Good morning.
My name's Rhonda Rich. I live in Kaiser and I live at 1480 Rafael Street. And I am going to speak more on the emotional side of being a citizen who lives in, basically on the firing range of bullets coming over. I live about five houses down from the house that was hit on June 2nd. Went over and weren't sure which house it was, but we did find out, went over and talked to that couple. And very disturbing that, to see the bullet hole in the backsplash coming, if the granite backsplash had not been there, she probably would have been hit because it was literally this far away that the bullet landed on the countertop. So of course, I enjoy my backyard and I have lower an area that I mow. I have, when shooting does occur over there, I don't go in my backyard, especially the lower area, because I never know whether a bullet will be coming over in my backyard. So now that we have evidence and we have somebody actually almost getting killed from a bullet, I think, and I'm glad to hear that you're taking this seriously and taking some action because this, this has to stop. It's like letting your child run out on a busy street and you know eventually they're going to get hit. Eventually somebody is going to get bodily harm or killed. And there's also a lot of traffic out on the river and from, you know, from Kaiser Rapids Park. And that's city-county park too. But there's water skiers, there's kayakers, it's heavily used. So it's not even just the residents and we are densely populated on the other side of the, across from Polk County, that if somebody gets hit out water skiing, I mean, what, what can we say? Well, we were kind of working on it. So we're just, I know we're a little impatient because we want this to be taken care of in a timely, quick manner. Like tomorrow would be nice to, you know, we would like to, we've, I guess Attorney Johnson's letter to Lance Davis who owns the property over there was kind of cease and desist until you can make sure that bullets are not going to be coming over into our neighborhood. And that's the, the feeling of the, the neighborhood is to stop this until you can do it safely. I mean, we're not saying, okay, you know, with land use issues, I know it takes forever to change the, that you can't, you know, I know it's county, you can't shoot over there. So what we want is just to know that we can be in our yards, our houses even, to, to know that this bullet came into a house is, you know, you're not even safe in your, in your house on the other side of the wall. So?
Have you thought of going to the Polk Itemizer Observer?
Pardon?
You know, I know there's been a lot of news in the Kaiser Times.
Yes.
But it seems like there needs to be news in the papers that the Polk County people read.
Our plan is to go to the Polk County Commissioners meeting.
Perfect. I just wrote that down.
Right, well, and also to their, to the newspaper that they have in Dallas.
Okay.
And see if you can get their interest in, you know, send over the articles that have been written in the Kaiser Times and, and talk with them.
Uh huh.
And sometimes that gets people's attention, you know?
Okay, yeah, that's what we need some advice to because we're willing to take this however far we need to. I think there's some civil action on the property owner's side, whether we can do anything, not with the association, but with the neighbors who live there. It just doesn't affect Rafael. If you know, there's also shoreline Rivercrest and goes down to Willamette Drive, which are all.
Right.
And the topography of the, the other side of the river is as kind of a semicircle. So the letter that was sent to Mayor Clark from Sheriff Garten said that Lance Davis, who does own that property over there, is going to put up signage indicating that shooting needed to be in east-west direction instead of a north-south direction. Well, east-west takes you into Sunset Park. That's where the shooting was in September. North-south takes us into our neighborhood. So there's really shooting over in our, across the river. There is no safe direction. And like Dan said, there really needs to be, I don't know whether we can encourage, this will encourage this property owner, if he's going to have a shooting range, to make it a shooting range and make it safe. Make it, you know, know who's coming in and what direction they're shooting in instead of just kind of the wild west over there is what I, I feel like it is because there is a lot of shooting. I know people complain about the, the noise. Well, we know noise ordinances, we can't do much about that. But it is very disturbing if somebody has PTSD or something. I don't know how they could handle it because sometimes it's, it's very rapid fire. And, and like Carol said, this isn't a second amendment issue that we're trying to address. It's a public safety issue.
And there are responsibilities that go along with rights. I mean, I'm a firm believer in that.
Right, right.
And this is irresponsible.
Right.
Agree with you totally.
Okay, well, we will be going to the Polk County Commissioners and seeing what their response is.
Yeah, we're not trying to push it off. We're just saying we'll keep working on our end.
From all angles, yeah.
But, but if citizens come forward, it's a whole lot more effective than other elected officials trying to influence what someone else is doing.
And Madam Chair, also, there is a jurisdictional issue. I mean, Polk has a lot more ability to control its residents than we have the ability to control Polk County. So the more they can do, the better, you know, just because of our limited reach into their county.
Well, hopefully it makes a difference. We don't elect them, so we're kind of wondering how, how we'll be received and hopefully we'll be received because this is a, a huge public safety issue, just as in complaining.
Absolutely, they do need to hear from us.
Right, yeah. Rhonda, I, I would suggest that you, I would not even, I mean, you could go and testify just like you're doing here, but I'd also call, an email right now, today.
Uh huh.
And ask to speak to, to the county commissioners over there, Commissioner Wheeler, Pope, and, and I'd also contact?
And Ainsworth.
And Ainsworth, and I'd also contact the Polk County Sheriff and ask them what they're doing to help with the situation. Because we're going to work on it from our side.
Right.
But that was one of the things I wrote down. Make sure that you're doing the same thing on Polk County side. And I love the idea of the commissioners to get the newspaper to write about the issues on that side because those are the elected officials that need to hear about what's really happening over there too.
Okay.
And we'll, we're in touch with Kaiser and we've, I think we've actually exchanged some emails with, with Polk County too.
We've copied, we also copied a letter to, back in September from the neighborhood association to Polk County Commissioners and didn't hear anything back. And I've also copied them on some emails. And yeah, so we need to go talk to them. You're talking about going and talking?
Face to face, right.
At the county commissioner, the BOC?
I would, I would send an email and make a phone call today. And then I would, and then I would show up just like you have here at their next public meeting.
Yeah, we're on their agenda, so.
Excellent. All right, good job.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry. And we're doing everything possible that we can and?
We just pray nobody gets hurt.
And we keep, keep copying us on the emails so that we stay informed. That would be helpful for us so that we don't have to just keep reaching out and trying to get information. So if you get information and would forward it to us, I know several of you have emailed us already, that would be appreciated.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that, we have, everyone who signed up got to speak. Is there anyone else who arrived late and didn't get to sign up? Okay. Let's move now into our presentations. The first one is the Oregon Garden Foundation Grant Report. Allison and Tammy are here. Tammy, you get two, a twofer this morning.
I do. Good morning commissioners. For the record, I'm Tamara Getch. I am the Director for Community Services and we oversee the economic development program for Marion County. Marion County receives annual resources from the state of Oregon from its lottery proceeds. These dollars in Marion County are then strategically invested in various capacities, including efforts that generate tourism and, and support economic growth. This morning, we have Ally Pennell here from the Oregon Garden Foundation, who's going to talk about what they've been doing in the Oregon Garden and how they're utilizing the resources that Marion County invests on their behalf.
Thank you, thank you for the introduction, Tamara. For the record, my name's Allison Pennell and I'm Development Director for the Oregon Garden Foundation. And good morning commissioners, thanks for seeing us today. So some of the highlights from our second quarter report, which occurred last fall through the end of 2017. The Christmas in the Garden event was produced by the Oregon Garden Resort. That brought about 55,000 people out to the garden. And royalties were assessed to help with our debt repayment at a dollar per paid attendee. So we recently got that royalty check, which was then brought to Marion County for 42,000, a little bit over 42,000. We also had the Oktoberfest at the Mount Angel Oktoberfest, which, which raised over $5,400. So that was part of the big community building at the Fest Hall in Mount Angel and occurs each September. So we're on track to be participating in that again. We also were getting the TOT, which was just over 51,000, which was paid in the second quarter. And then we also did our year-end appeal in the second quarter, which totaled over $7,000. And that was allocated for the Natural Resource Education Program at the Garden, which just finished up this spring. And then I've also provided, I have handouts to leave with you because they didn't get emailed in, but I did create the 2017 annual report. It's a little bit, you know, it was, it was created based on last year's, before we had staff at the foundation, and so I have that to give you guys today before I leave. And then as far as new things that have happened, like early in the, in the third quarter, there's a new fundraising program at the garden to help offset the cost of the annuals, the annual plants that we grow there by our horticulture staff. And so that program is called Cultivate Color. And it requires an annual donation. We're trying to get more programs that require repeated donations and long-term donations to help the garden maintain itself and grow. And so that program just launched this spring and so far we have almost 1,000 out of our $6,000 goal. We've also been a little delayed in the plant production and so we're hopeful that throughout the summer, people will see that program. We have signs in the garden for that. I've also applied for several grants. One of note is from the Hardy Plant Society of Oregon. At the garden, we're doing a greater emphasis on, instead of just becoming a fun or event destination, really elevating our status as a botanical garden and Oregon's botanical garden. So we're developing some collections policies on the living plant collections. And one grant that I'm very confident that we're going to receive is for a trillium collection, which those are little woodland, little woodland plants that, flowers that bloom in the early spring to help drive the really great horticulture plant enthusiasts out to the garden before, before the big season, before the sunshine and before the, the more popular times of the year in the spring and summer. Because they bloom in more like end of February, beginning of March. I've also been working at developing some ongoing relationships with the Oregon Association of Nurseries, who founded the garden, and we're looking to get some corporate sponsors in the garden to help provide more long-term and annual, annual support for our ongoing things. We're also, we did receive some funding from Roth's Fresh Markets. They've historically been a great fundraiser for the garden and for the education program. And so they stepped in because we were denied a grant from the Collins Foundation for the Natural Resources Program. So they stepped in and they have already provided money that helped for the spring program that just finished and some money they have sponsored our golf tournament, which that is ongoing. We're working on selling sponsorships and getting participants for that. And that's going to be on October 1st, on Monday, in Oregon City. And so that's been the foundation's role, is to pay for the educator staff of that program. And so that, the golf event is meant as a revenue stream for that so that we don't have to go for grants because it's very challenging to get grants just for ongoing payroll of people. And then we are, we also are working with, on behalf of the foundation, we're working on doing some education, although we love the Natural Resource Program, some more potential programs that would be garden-focused and pollinator-focused. And for other ages, the Natural Resource Program is fourth through sixth grade, but we would like to have maybe a middle school or high school program in the future to help get more people into the horticulture industry and more people out at the garden for students. And then we are working on the, the debt forgiveness proposal from Marion County. There have been a lot of meetings since I started in December about it and we're, the foundation's very grateful for that opportunity and hopeful all the partners can come together to figure out a remaining mechanism to move forward when Marion County is no longer a partner. So if, I also have the financial statement. So, I also have the financial statements attached, so if you have any questions, I'm ready to answer them.
Well, thank you, great report, it sounds like you're doing a lot of really great fundraising and activities. Unfortunately, Sam's not here this morning, because he's the one, you know, that's like right in the middle of the Oregon Garden, I'm sure he'd have things to add, but I appreciate the report, do you have any questions, Commissioner?
Just, how did the, the Christmas in the Garden go with the ice skating? I know we had ice skating over here in Salem, did that tear into the attendance compared to the year before?
The attendance was a little, was higher, and I think what really helped it was, I know they were worried about the ice skating, what really helped it was the weather. It rained just like maybe one or two of the days, and so it got a lot more people out than previous years, so Christmas in the Garden was a huge success, but they're a little bit hesitant to, you know, hesitant to project that again, because some Decembers, when it's so cold and rainy, they just get like half the people, so, so the ice skating seemed to be successful.
But that's, that's when it's fun to come over and have hot chocolate and
Yeah.
Go ice skating, yeah.
And part of the benefit of having so many partners invested in the Oregon Garden is that you really tap into the talents and available resources that each of those organizations bring to the table. So, we have the Oregon Garden Foundation, who is dedicated partners and work hard to bring resources to bear for the, the Garden's further development. We have Moonstone, who is the property manager, and also is a key investor in the, in the Garden. City of Silverton is also committed to this as well, and currently Marion County. So, having all of these partners, and then having great staff, and a dedicated board to really ensure that this has a life beyond today, is, I think, really paying off, and I'm seeing a, I think, a new level of excitement amongst the boards with this debt forgiveness, and seeing how they can become self-sustaining in the future. So, I, I think that Marion County's investment has been wise, and I'm hopeful for the positive results from the negotiations that there, that's happening right now, from the remaining partners.
If I may, yeah, Ally, how, how are you working with the Silverton Chamber, or is there a relationship over there with the Chamber? Because I didn't see a lot or anything in here.
Yeah, there is, there is a relationship with the Chamber, the foundation helped support their, their golf tournament by sponsoring, and I do attend the Chamber meetings, but they're also Wednesday mornings, so we, I do attend some of the Chamber meetings and have met with some of the local businesses. There definitely could be more, I feel like also Travel Salem could be a good resource to get people to coming out to the Garden, but we definitely have, and also the folks in marketing at Moonstone also participate in Chamber activities, so we do try to bridge that.
So, Travel Salem, is there a relationship going on? Sam sits on that board as well, so there's an easy connection there.
Directly with the foundation, there's not a relationship right now that I know of, but I do, I do think they help us with some of the marketing for events, and, and so I do think there has been one in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. All right, now we'll move into our 2018 Marion County Fair highlights, and this is just around the corner, believe it or not. Dylan Wells is here, Chair of the Fair Board, Jill Ingles, who else do we have?
Mike Adams.
Debbie, Mike, the whole crew here.
Good morning.
Good morning, introduce yourself, and, for the record, and tell us about the fair.
Dylan Wells, Marion County Fair Board Chair, here today to kind of give an overview of what's coming up here, July 12th through the 15th, at the Oregon State Fairgrounds for the Marion County Fair.
I'm Jill Ingles, I'm the event coordinator.
I'm Mike Adams, I'm a key volunteer with the Marion County Fair.
And Tamara Getch for, I'm the Director for Community Services, of which the fair is part of our department. Before I kick it off to Dylan, I just want, knowing that this has been kind of a historic year for Marion County, and celebrating its hundred and seventy-five years, I did a little bit of research on Oregon Fairs and Marion County, and just kind of give you a little highlight as to why we do this annually, what's the history of fairs in Oregon. So, in my research and looking through various documents, and there's probably lots more that I have yet to see, but I found in 1861, the concept of agricultural fairs began in Oregon, and the very first one was held in Oregon City, and the purpose of fairs in the nineteen, or excuse me, the 1860s, as described by the Agricultural Society, is very applicable to today. They stated, "To examine and study the improvement over a previous year, new gains for increase of commerce, fruit and garden products that were available for the table and luxury, floral introductions to beauty, beautify our homes, stock to increase the value of our herds, arts to decorate dwellings, and so much more." So, they're very artful in their descriptions of what fairs' purposes were back then. And in 1885, the legislature directed the State Board of Agriculture to govern annual state fair. In 1991, excuse me, 1911, the legislature authorized each county to, to be appropriated two thousand dollars to produce the agricultural fair. Wouldn't that be a blessing, right, John? And at that point in time, county governments oversaw and managed the county fairs. In 1913, the management of the fair changed from counties to fair boards, and so that's what we have today. And in 1959, the Oregon Fair Association was incorporated as a nonprofit, and they began their advocacy to support fairs across the state, helping to educate and inform others about the importance of fairs and what they bring to local communities. In 1950, excuse me, 1969, two of our local youth organizations, the 4H and our Future Farmers of America, known as FFA, had an interest in hosting a fair. So, they said, "Why don't we join our efforts and do our own fair, and what we'll do is that we'll try to figure out how we can showcase what we do, and then we'll produce it for the community." This first showing was a success, and if we start that, as kind of Marion County's beginnings of a Marion County Fair, according to the records that I've seen, we're at, this will be our forty-ninth fair this year. And in seventy-six, it, we were more officially recognized by the then Marion County Fair Board, and it was sanctified that the Marion County Fair began in seventy-six officially. In the 1980s, kind of skipping forward, we began, we began to look a little bit more broadly at what fairs were bringing into the community, and not just cattle that were brought in by the FFA and the 4H clubs, but they began looking more broadly in Marion County, so they added floral, grange displays, music, entertainment, rabbits, hobbies, crafts, photography, and so much more. And in the 1990s and early twenty, two thousands, Marion County added a few more modern touches, even though they have, some of them have a touch into the past, so car shows that we brought in, we partnered with local efforts with school districts, with Awesome 3000, dog agility was added to the lineup, partnerships, and talent shows, we're looking at ways that we can draw the interest of local communities. So, as you can see, across these many years of efforts of local government and citizens working together, we've been able to bring fairs into communities, and across the years be able to tailor them to our local needs. Today, I wanted, Dylan is our Chair for the Fair Board this year, and he, Marion County took the approach of trying to figure out how we can take the development of this fair from going from seven people, so we have, we have a statute that says we can only have seven people who work on a board, who, who are responsible for putting this fair on. And so we began with a key volunteer. Dylan was one of our first key volunteers that came on to Marion County's Board, and he is now a Fair Board member. Mike is our newest key volunteer, and he's been jumping right in and excited to have him in our mix. And Jill is our contractor, who is working on fair management. Without these three, and those that stand with them on a monthly basis and planning, they've done a great job in this coming year, or in this past year for this coming year's fair. And Dylan, I'm going to kick it off to you, and we'll go through the slides.
And we also want to thank you for the staff, under Tamara, and we have Denise, and even Daniel here, who's helped out and moved on, and we've had many help, so. We have a slide here that's got the highlighted events, you know, we have a lot of things going on in the four days, for the nine dollars that it costs to come in, this is all free entertainment that you don't have to pay after that nine dollars, so it's a great thing going on. Rodeo going on Saturday night, full Rough Stock rodeo, see the Real Heroes display, where we have a lot of the branches of the military displaying, some things, doing demonstrations, Civil Air Patrol showing off their wares, the carnival. I think the coolest thing is the Alaskan Racing Pigs, those guys are something cool to watch, and for how young the little pigs are, they really get moving. And the kids loved seeing them cheer on their little piglet that they chose to win was something cool to see. We have the Teen Idol Singing Contest going on on Sunday, there is the Muddy Paws Flyball Tournament that happens in Jackman Long Building. I recommend a set of earplugs, if you want to really enjoy it, but they have dogs flying all over the place in that, chasing tennis balls, seeing how far they can jump, it's really quite interesting. The, kind of just a breakdown of day by day, this is our Thursday schedule, main things going on, new, not new going on at the fair, but new this year was they're moving the 4H Bake Sale into Columbia Hall, where we have bingo baseball going on, have the woodcarvers demos, beanbag baseball, sorry. We have lines out the doors, we, I believe it was two years ago, we had a little mishap, we said bingo started at ten, and our fair opens at ten, and we had people beating on the doors, didn't want to miss out on bingo, so we had to kind of bump that up a little bit to accommodate that. Also, we have free health screening going on to provide that service. Friday, we, is our awesome day, we have a big highlight, on the main stage is Steve Izzari. This year, he was the lead singer for Journey for a while, and he has some of his original stuff, so he will be out playing. We have steam activities happening all around the fair, you can go and do a scavenger hunt, we have DIY 3D glasses, fireworks, salt, salt painting, and they, with the help of SKEF, they're doing a Ferris wheel build at the fair, and also be launching water balloons. I gotta stay away from that.
So, Dylan, does the Commissioner have to test the Ferris wheel to see if it works? Kind of like the dog suit?
You know, we could, we could give it a whirl. I don't know.
I'm in. I'd rather do that than the rough rodeo.
Yes, also, we have the Rough Stock rodeo happening Saturday night, and then following the Rough Stock rodeo, we have the country music
That's a good one.
Artist, Easton Corbin coming in.
That's good.
So, we should have a really good, solid Saturday evening for things going on. It also is the market auction for the 4H and FFA, so they have a barbecue before, and then go into the auction, and it's a big turnout, and the kids get to sell their animals, and give a little return from raising them all season long. We also have the Home Depot Kids Workshop, little pitter-patter of hammers going on all day, it's kind of fun to see with the orange aprons walking around. We also, Sunday, brand new for us for a while, we've had a car show, it went away, and we're coming back, we're having a new car show. Mike has really been heading up on that, and also, he's been taking the barbecue grill-off competition under his wing, and helping get that going. We have the SKEF Mobile Free Books going on on Sunday, the big one for me is the 4H Small Animal Costume Contest, nothing is cooler than seeing little goats in Doritos bags, or kind of dressed up as different things. Also, we have superheroes coming out, we are going to have Star Wars characters, Disney princesses, Iron Man, Spider-Man, Chewbacca was a big hit here a couple years ago, and he's a big character walking around. Here are some of our sponsors that helped us put together this fair, big thank you to them, we have a long list of supporters, and we couldn't be there, and there's more that are not on the list, and we thank them very much. Also, new, kind of big new things, we are also doing the, a full bar going on in the woods, we are, so that will be going on, I believe, Friday and Saturday evenings for the concertgoers, the rodeo, so that is happening. It should kind of bring a little more to the fair, and kind of create a gathering spot, we're going to have a lot of yard games going on, and so, kind of a place to relax. Here is our 2018 Fair Board, and we have, let's see, this is my fifth fair, and I was the first key volunteer, and now we are up to three key volunteers, and then I have moved over to the Fair Board. So, yeah, we thank them for all their service. Just a quick other things, I had all prepared for Sam, letting him know that both cheesecake competitions, what time they are for Marion County Dairy Women are Thursday, ten o'clock in the morning, and then the
I think we're doing it.
Public competitions, Blueberry Cheesecake Competition, I think that one is tailored really for Sam.
Yes.
And that one's at nine o'clock on Friday. I know that the theme for public competitions is 175 years, so there's a lot of different plays going on with that. I was also going to let Sam know, because he's been bragging about his new granddaughter is the Pretty Baby Contest, is Saturday at 10:30 at the main stage. Also, another kind of highlight at the main stage is the Salem Kaiser Cloggers will be on Thursday at 8:30, it's always been a pretty good draw. And then, I tried to find out how many turkeys were going to be involved this year, because I know we had a couple show up, so they couldn't get involved this year, 'cause I know we had a couple show up. So they couldn't give back to me, but I know that all fair animals are up.
I'll be there.
Yeah, well, I know at least one or two. So, but all animals on the fair are up, and that's kind of cool. Probably our biggest growth is dairy cows, which was interesting to see that we're having a big push on dairy cows.
We're the number two dairy farm county in the state.
Yes, and we've had great program going on in the county. A local dairy has basically offered some of their dairy cows up to kids to come in and kind of adopt a dairy cow, and then they'll be able to show it, and.
Oh, cool.
So that's one of the reasons why we have a large growth in the dairy cow division. We also knew is we're hosting three corporate kind of gatherings at the fair. The reason behind that was try to get people that don't normally come to the fair and get them in the doors. So we have three companies that are hosting a get-together at the fair, and we have an event venue, so might as well use it. Anything else you guys would like to add?
Mike, would you be willing to talk about the barbecue grill and what you're looking for in teams?
Well, you know, we've had this barbecue cook-off for several years, and I kind of was observing it last year, and I said, you know, we have to take this up another level. So I got Ace Hardmore involved donating a couple of grills and a bunch of goodies, and then I got my food purveyor FSA. Thanks Randy Brown for donating $500 towards the purchase of the meat. So really, we just want to bring it up a level, so that maybe in the future, we can put it up to more of a pro competition and bring in, you know, 20 teams. But a team could be anywhere from one to three people. It really is, it's just a matter of, we're looking for people that are great backyard barbecuers. It's not really, you know, it's not rocket science. It's, it's, it's just something fun, then you get a, you know, possibly win, first prize is a $600 Traeger grill. So, and then the second prize is a three or $400 Weber grill. So, yeah, we just kind of, I just went out and hit up some of my contacts in the community and got them to jump on board and donate.
Is that Saturday?
Sunday.
Sunday?
Sunday, as well as the car show. So the way it's gonna be set up is the car show will be back in the Grove area, and the barbecue competition will be up front, in front of it. And you'll be able to, you know, come in and look at some cool cars, and that's another thing. My buddy Jim Billings is kind of the car guru in town, and when he says bring your car up, people show up. So we could have quite a good number of cars out there to go along with the barbecue competition.
Mr. Adams, do you know any place I could get some good barbecue sauce to?
Well, as a matter of fact, I'm, after I leave here, I'm heading to my bottler, 'cause I have a new sauce coming out called Carolina Mustard, and that'll be on the shelves at Ross soon. But yes, I have all, I'll have four sauces on the shelves at Ross, or you can pick them up at any of my barbecue restaurants.
I was gonna say, if I entered, I wouldn't have to disclose that conflict that I used your barbecue sauce.
No, you, I encourage.
I think I'd get your barbecue sauce.
And that's one of the prizes, is in each, I'm having goodie bags and aprons made for all the contestants, and in those goodie bags will be different assorted things, and along with barbecue sauce.
So if somebody's watching, they wanted to enter this, they can go online onto the Marion County website and say, I want to be a barbecue.
McFair.net.
Right. So, and what's it cost them to enter the barbecue?
Not a thing. You just have to show up with your grill and, and your tools to do your cooking. We supply the meat, you supply whatever secret spices you have, and, and yeah, use my barbecue sauce.
And their own grill for the day.
Their own grill?
Their own grill for the day.
Their own grill for the day. So they have to show up with whatever they're gonna cook it on, whether it's a gas grill, or a Traeger, or a charcoal grill, or, and the idea is so that they impart whatever their skill is with the tools that they're used to use it.
Is there a place you can enter homemade ice cream? Because that's my specialty. Butterfinger homemade ice cream.
I'll test it for you.
We can make something happen. It might be a little difficult entering it Wednesday to be judged on Thursday, but I think we could try to figure that out.
So I just wanted to, I wanted Mike to talk about that, because part, the excitement about the fair in part is all the wonderful competitions that are going on, and that's just one example of our fair board and our key volunteers that have taken charge of a particular area that has competitions, and we're looking for people in the community to participate. This, we help to bring the fair to Marion County residents and others, but it is your fair. So this is an opportunity for local residents to enter into competitions in Marion County Fair, and see how you fare against your local competitors. So we have barbecues, we have florals, we have photography. I know the Board of Commissioners is doing a special 175 photography competition, and a host of other competitions, and all of those can be found on our website, Mcfair.net, and go under Competitions, and you can see all those that are there, and it'll walk you through how to get registered. It's much easier if you register online. I didn't last year when I entered something, and I stood in line. You can still get entered, but it's a much easier process if you go online prior to the fair. So I just went online, it took me three clicks, and if you can't remember the Mcfair.net, just, just Google Marion County Oregon Fair, because there are like a lot of Marion Counties around the nation.
I just got to the wrong website.
Right, exactly. So.
It's like.
So type in Marion County Oregon Fair, and then it'll take you to the county's website. There's an activities thing, and then you just go under contests, and you're right there.
Yeah, who knows where this fair is, but it's the 15th through the 24th. That's not our fair.
Yeah, yeah.
And the sooner you enter, the easier it makes it on us, so we're not scrambling a day before the fair.
All right, well, Jill, anything you want to add?
I just wanted to just briefly say, there's a million moving parts, and that's part of my job, is to make sure we keep all the gears and cogs running. But without all the partners, and I've heard that theme throughout the day, the partnerships with Oregon Garden, on and on and on, but, you know, Monday morning, I get to spend with the sheriff's work crew starting to set up, and that's all, I mean, that's this Monday. So we've, here we go. All of the people that make it possible, and all the work, it wouldn't be this fair. And this is one of the, I have to say, one of the best fairs in the state of Oregon because of that. So we're lucky.
We do. We have a fabulous fair. Thank you, Jill, and your hubby for all the work that you do.
My pleasure.
On the, getting the sponsorships, and getting the events coordinated and all of that. Thank you to the volunteer fair board. I always tell people, you know, there are boards and commissions in Marion County that are kind of policy, and then there are roll-up-your-sleeves kind of boards and commissions where you have to do work. And I think we had a couple people that joined the fair board and thought it was the one and not the other, but, you know, you, you need to be ready to actually do the on-the-ground work if you're on the fair board, and these people put in hours and hours and hours. And having the key volunteers is just so fantastic to be able to expand that volunteer pool. And I, the fair just gets better every year, and thank you Tammy and to your staff for, I know they're, they're kind of just eating and breathing fair right now, for the last few weeks, and it'll go on that way even after the fair, as things wrap up. So appreciate you being here today to share, and hope everybody here, make sure that they're on the fairgrounds during our Marion County Fair.
Fifteen days, 14 hours, one minute, 22 seconds.
Right, yeah.
If you don't want to count, it's July 12th through the 15th.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's move into our consent calendar.
Madam Chair, I'll move the consent calendar. First, under Board of Commissioners, approve an order amending the initiation of Title III funds from the Secure Rural Schools and Community Self-Determination Act of approximately $500,000 for law enforcement patrols and training equipment purchases for search and rescue and other emergency services. Also under Board of Commissioners, approve an intergovernmental agreement with USDA APHIS Wildlife Services for Wildlife Damage Management Services in Marion County, and designate John Latimer as authorized representative of this agreement. Under Community Services, approve an award, an order awarding the fiscal year 2017-18 community project grant applications to the following: City of Jervis, $25,000, and Jefferson School District, $19,000. Under Community Services, approve a ratification of economic development grant in the amount of $100,000 to Chamecada Community College Diesel Mechanics Program. Under Finance, approve Amendment Number One to the contract of, for services with Grove Miller Swank PC to add $80,952 for audit services and extend through June 30th, 2019. Under Health, approve an intergovernmental agreement with Polk County for $152,314.20 to provide funding to support the Public Health Modernization Act through June 30th, 2019. Also under Health, approve incoming funds, Amendment Number Ten with the Oregon Health Authority, to add $2,731,486 for the financing of public health services beginning July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019. Under Public Works, approve incoming funds, intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for $520,397.46 for the Cale Street and Corden Road construction project. Also under Public Works, approve a public improvement agreement with Intermountain Slurry Seal, Inc. for $445,393.62 for 2018 slurry sealing of various roads in Marion County and the cities of Salem, Silverton, Stateon, and Turner. In the Tax Office, approve an order authorizing the property tax refund in the amount of $16,393.51 to Terminal Freezers LLC.
All right, so all those items are moved on the consent agenda, and I will second the motion. Any discussion on any of them? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those are approved. All right, been waiting a long time, sorry about that. So we are gonna skip over Finance until we do the public hearings, and go right into Public Works. So we're on item number three, which is to consider a resolution waiving certain provisions of the Marion County Code, Chapter 5.10, applicable to the franchise between the county and Comcast of Oregon LLC. I have Alan Haley and Scott Norris. Good morning.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Alan Haley, Public Works Director. In front of you is the, a resolution to consider waiving certain provisions of Marion County Code, Chapter 5.10, as it applies to the Comcast of Oregon, Inc., new franchise. So we've been in negotiations with Comcast, and in that, within those negotiations, we decided that it was better to put some of the issues that we currently had in code actually inside the franchise agreement. So because of that, and because we still have other franchises waive and charter that are subject to the code, we need to waive these particular, basically 16 sections of the code on behalf of Comcast, and let the franchise itself speak to these issues instead of the county code. So that is the essence of the issue. Scott, did you have a comment?
Commissioners, Commissioners, I'm Scott Norris from the Office of Legal Counsel. The new franchise with Comcast was negotiated with the involvement of both the county and the city of Salem. City of Salem has a franchise with Comcast for the city limits. The city and the county have identical cable ordinances, and Alan and myself worked with city staff to identify these provisions in our codes which need to be waived, and the city in the process of adopting its franchise with Comcast is waiving the same provisions in their code as we are proposing to waive here. And so if there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Could you just pick one provision and explain kind of why it's being waived?
For example, Section 5.10.030 is a definition of gross receipts. The, this was a highly negotiated term. This relates to the calculation of fees under the franchise agreement, and so the, the definition of gross receipts in the, in the contract is substantially different than the definition in the ordinance. So we're waiving the entire provision of 5.10.030.
So why not a nonprofit school? Give me that, the next one down.
That, that one, the definition in the contract was actually a little, a little bit broader than what was in code. So we're proposing waive, waiving the term nonprofit in the definition of school, because the definition that we have in the franchise agreement doesn't have the.
So just to make it consistent, there wasn't, there wasn't some nonprofit school out there that you were trying to do something?
That's correct.
With, okay. All right. It's kind of confusing to look at it and go, so why would that be waived?
It was meant to be inclusive rather than exclusive.
All right. Okay. Any questions?
No. Been a long time coming.
We'll get to that.
Yeah, that's next. That's next. So we're just doing the.
Waiver.
Waiver, and then next we do the agreement.
So Madam Chair, I'll move that we consider a resolution waiving certain provisions of Marion County Code, Chapter 5.10, applicable to the franchise between the county and Comcast of Oregon LLC.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's approved. Now, we have number four, is to consider approval of the franchise agreement with Comcast of Oregon LLC through June 30th, 2028. And Alan, that's you.
I'm still here. So we've been working with Comcast. We'll go back. We started this franchise with Far West Communications back in 1994. It transferred between multiple people, eventually through AT&amp;T, and then to Comcast as of 2002. There were provisions in the original for five-year extensions of the franchise, and we exercised those through 2010, January. We have since been in individual extensions. We've actually done eight of them to extend the franchise further while we've been negotiating the new franchise. So it's been eight and a half years in the process of putting this new franchise together. In the, basically, March and April area, we had negotiations kind of come to, we felt we, we saw the light at the end of the tunnel. We started meeting actually weekly to negotiate this and get it fine-tuned, and the new franchise is now before you. It's a 10-year franchise. The city is, is also, is adopting theirs in June. This will be effective from July 1, 2018, until June 30th, 2028. So at this point, we're asking you to go ahead and approve the new 10-year Comcast franchise with Comcast One, Inc. Any questions?
Yeah. Well, first of all, long time coming, as you were saying. Very glad that this is finally formalized here, and that we're not just extending, 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 which you, seems like we've done that for a long time. I have a question on the HD channels. I'm wondering, Tim, would you mind coming up, just to, from the Comcast side? So I asked this question at Management Update, and Alan answered it, but I'd like to hear it from Comcast's side of it. So we, we have Access Channels 21, I think is the one that we've been using for Marion County, and there's 22 and 23, and HD is not one of those. So, and when I asked Alan in the provision in it, it says that there's going to be an HD channel. Part of, part of the problem that we have, and I've said this over and over, but you haven't been here to hear it, is that it used to be people watched us on Comcast, I mean, on the, on the access channels, but now that you're in the 700s for HD, my husband watches it all the time, you don't flip back down to the ones that are, you know, so people don't just see us when they're scrolling through, because they're up in the 700s and we're clear down in the 20s. So kind of tell me what you're, what Comcast thinking is around the getting HD so that the public is more linked in with what's going on with their county and their cities and school districts and that kind of thing.
Okay, yeah, as the agreement, you'll end up with two HD channels.
Okay.
And those will be simulcast, meaning one, they'll be in high definition, and then, because not everybody has high def.
Right, right.
And so there'll also be, it'll also be broadcast in. And so there'll also be, it'll also be broadcast in standard def as well, so it should, it will be in both.
So it'll be up somewhere in the seven, eight-hundred range?
Correct.
Whatever channel happens to be available up in there.
Right.
Okay.
Right, and we try to place those together as close together as we can.
Okay, so it's how many channels? Two?
Yeah, you'll end up with two initially. The way it's set up, because we have some protocols we have to go through within the Oregon, organization, but the city and county will give us a, a letter, I'm assuming around July first. And we have a hundred and twenty days from there to have that first channel up and running.
Okay, great.
So, and there's different approvals, even though it's a franchise that we go through from region to division to corporate, just to make sure we've got everything aligned, and then it'll be up and lit, so, so July, August, September, October. So November one will be up and running, no later than that.
All right. Well, very good. Thank you. That, that's a provision I know that I've been rooting for, for a long time, so I'm glad that we finally were able to resolve that.
Yeah, and CCTV actually is broadcasting in HD, and they basically dumb it down to SD to get to Comcast, so CCTV is ready to go.
Right, yeah, I know they're ready to go. It's just a question of whether or not people that are, that have HD are, I mean, we're just kind of out of their radar now because it's so far down the, the channel numbers.
Correct.
Just want to make sure that we get that going. Thank you.
So, Madam Chair, I know that this is a ten-year contract. Mr. Latimer, are you and Tim going to start negotiating the next one because it takes that long to get it done?
I think they're tired of meeting. They're going to take a break. They're going to take a little break, right?
We'll start in August.
Start in August for the next one, yeah.
Mr. Chair, or Madam Chair.
That's okay. I'm glad you got.
No, that's all right. I don't think that either Alan or I will be here in.
That's what I said, you might start it now.
No, I don't think so.
All right, Madam Chair.
Tim might not be here either, who knows?
No, I'll be here. I'll move that we approve, move approval of a franchise agreement with Comcast of Oregon LLC through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-eight.
And I will second the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, the franchise agreement is approved. And the last item here under this Public Works is to consider approval of the letter of agreement with the Comcast Cable Franchise for phased dark fiber strands through July one, two thousand and twenty-two. And Alan, your name's on this one, too.
Yeah, we kept this actually out of the franchise, but if you don't know, we're, we're currently using Comcast fiber for our INET, which is our fiber interconnectivity between government offices. And this side letter of agreement is an agreement to get off of that fiber and return those strands of fiber back to Comcast inside the window of the franchise, so inside the ten-year window. For us, however, we have a hundred and thirty-seven strands that are basically assigned to Marion County through six different sites that we have connected. And we are agreeing to get off of that and free of charge the use of it for the next four years. Anything that we still are using after four years is a chart for which we will be paying. However, ninety-six of those hundred and thirty-seven strands are between Courthouse and Courthouse Square. And part of the negotiation was, since they really aren't usable to Comcast, they will turn those over to us at the signing of the agreement. So that basically leaves forty-one additional strands. The agreement says that we will return twenty-six of them within thirty days, and I'm pretty sure we'll be able to pull that off. And then that will, we'll leave fifteen strands to return to them over the next four years. And the county has projects in place to get fiber in and interconnect our various facilities. So hopefully we'll meet that four-year window and be off prior to waiting till the end of the franchise. So I'm asking for you to go ahead and approve the side letter of agreement between Comcast of Oregon One Incorporated and make the deal.
So, Madam Chair, if I may, so Alan, if, if I see in the, in the letter that if we do not make it within those four, forty-eight months, that there is a charge by, it looks like, per monthly charge.
Correct.
And just those rates that are on there, and I don't understand MPVS or whatever it is.
Megabits.
Three.
Megas.
Megabits per whatever.
Yes.
Just so it works, that's all I care about, right? So a hundred megabits, three hundred and sixty dollars a month. So if we, if we have an estimate of what those, I mean, if we didn't get off those, what that would be, the cost to the county in, in four years, do we know what that is?
The current plan?
A lot.
It, it could be, it could be a lot, but the current plan is that if we have anything left, it's going to be basically the single strand that is between us and the Department of Revenue, which is a hundred megabit fiber.
Per month.
So that'd be three hundred and sixty dollars per month until we can get off of it.
Okay.
But we do have a plan.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Want to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve a letter of agreement with Comcast Cable Franchise for phased dark fiber strands through July first, two thousand and twenty-two.
And I'll second the motion. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that's approved.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you very much for being here this morning, and I know this was meetings and meetings and meetings and more meetings, and so it's nice that we have something finalized.
I guess for the record, we should say that it was Tim Goodman from Comcast who was here reporting.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, Sheriff's Office. Sorry we kept you waiting this long. This is approval of a proclamation designating July fifteenth through twenty-one, two thousand and eighteen, as National Parole and Probation Officers Week in Marion County. And we have Commander Jeff Wood and Troy Gregg.
Good morning, Commissioners. Again, for the record, Jeff Wood, I'm Community Corrections Commander with the Marion County Sheriff's Office, and to my right is Troy Gregg, who is the Marion County Juvenile Department Director. We are here together to ask the Board to approve a proclamation designating July fifteenth through twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen, as National Pro and Probation Officer Week. As you may know, nationally, or actually since eighteen forty-one, parole probation and community, community supervision has played a vital role within our corrections and justice systems. Nationally, there are about five million people on some form of community supervision. Within Oregon, there are thirty-one thousand people either on parole or post-prison, or probation or post-prison supervision. And within that number, about three thousand two hundred reside within Marion County and are under the supervision of the Marion County Sheriff's Office, Community Corrections Division. Although Oregon is a bit unique since the passage of the Community Corrections Act in nineteen ninety-seven, but regardless of the organizational structure, whether it's a responsibility of the sheriff, whether it's a standalone county department, or it's combined with adult and juvenile under what we call a community justice model. The premise and responsibility of corrections and community corrections within Oregon is really to promote positive change, and that in and of itself promotes public safety. We ask our staff, our community correction staff, both within the Sheriff's Office and the Juvenile Department, to wear a lot of hats, and I think our community can and should be proud of the roles, responsibilities, and outcomes that our staff have. We ask them to be part psychologists. We ask them to deliver a gambit of assessments. What is the probability of them committing a new criminal act? What is their willingness to overcome a problem area of their life and promote positive change? We ask them to be a mentor and coach, to be a role model, so that we can coach them and support them, but also acknowledge our roles and responsibilities within the justice system. As crazy as this may sound, we are part teacher. We give homework. We teach cognitive lessons, and we ask them to bring that homework home to complete assignments and return back to their staff for feedback so that we know they are making those positive change. And finally, I'd say we ask them to be part police officer, enforcement deputy, and enforcing the conditions of supervision that they all have to be under so that we can facilitate that positive change. If those responsibilities aren't enough, in many cases, we ask them to have a caseload of about fifty, or we sign them to a treatment program designed for those who are most resistant to change, those who are the most likely to commit a new criminal offense. And we ask them to facilitate change. We ask them to work with those individuals so that they can have the supports and resources to effect positive change, and we do that through a variety of different ways. One is, and I know you've all heard this before, so please bear with me, we are a county, we are an agency along with juvenile that does EPICS-type style of supervision, which stands for Effective Practices in Community Supervision. The Sheriff's Office also adheres to Core Correctional Practices, which is a step, separate program, but very similar to EPICS, which is actually delivered throughout the entire Sheriff's Office regardless, regardless of division that you are in. And these programs give our officers, our deputies, the ability to be that positive role model, to provide those cognitive interventions, to problem solve, to skill build, and to effectively use the authority that is granted to us by our sheriff, by Oregon Revised Statute, so that we can facilitate change and appropriately consequence when a negative behavior occurs. One of the most important things we do is make referrals to community-based resources, of which we do have staff who are embedded. Whether it's our programs, which again you've heard of many a time, whether it's our Student Opportunity for Achieving Results Program, our Jail Reentry Program, our Women's Accelerated Reentry Program, all of which are, are reentry programs designed to address addiction, promote positive change, skill building, and positive behaviors within our community. But also our Senate Bill four sixteen program, which is our Probationary Prison Diversion Program, which is actually leading the state in prison diversion. People who historically are eligible for and receive a sentence to the Department of Corrections, we are now managing within that program. Family sentencing program, or even short-term transitional leave. Although I'd be the first to acknowledge that these programs would not be in existence without the support of our sheriff, without the support of the Board, and our community nonprofit partners, as well as other community or county departments like Health and Human Services and Community Services. Our parole and probation division staff play a key role, too, in delivering direct services as well as compiling those outcomes that you hear about fairly often. And I'll close with, speaking of outcomes, I'm often asked, do our services work? Does supervision work? Do our programs work? And I would say unequivocally, yes, they do. And all, one of the things that Marion County has enjoyed over the past, I'll say, ten years is, although it's a difficult word to pronounce and has different definitions, but whether you, when you talk about recidivism, when you talk about a new criminal act, whether you adhere to the old definition of a new felony conviction within three years of release from prison, or placement on probation by the courts, or the new definition of recidivism, which is a new felony or misdemeanor arrest, a new felony or misdemeanor conviction, or a reincarceration. Marion County has enjoyed a significant decrease in recidivism over the years, and that is a very good thing. Although I've had the, the honor, along with the sheriff, to speak before you about our programs and our successes, I would be remiss if I didn't point out that those successes, that decline in recidivism, although a bit oversimplistic, that means that people are overcoming years of addiction. That means people are getting jobs, they're reuniting with their family, they're becoming productive members within our community, and those services and those outcomes would not be reached without the direct participation of our line staff who provide those services, and that is to whom that proclamation is designed for. With that, I will turn it over to Troy.
Thank you, Commander Wood. Commissioners, again for the record, I'm Troy Gregg, Marion County Juvenile Director. I want to thank you for the opportunity to present today in request for this proclamation in partnering with the Sheriff's Office. And I want to briefly talk about the Juvenile Department, speak about the work that we do, but again, just want to really recognize the work that our probation officers do. In the Juvenile Department, our goal is, is working with youth as they come first into the system, and the impact that we can have ultimately has those long-term impacts on the Sheriff's Department. Because if we do good work with the youth that we work with, as they grow up and they become active members of the community, then the Sheriff's Office isn't dealing with them as they continue down a life of crime, but actually change their lives around and make a big difference in their lives. And the probation officers are a key part of that. We have multiple programs within the Juvenile Department, whether it's our AP program, which deals with kids doing community service, learning skills with a hands-on trade, the GAP program, which works with youth that are struggling in the home and families, the detention program counseling. But the truth is, is the probation department and the probation workers are those glue that fits all those program pieces together. Commissioner Cameron, I know you had the opportunity several months ago to go traveling around with one of our probation officers for part of the day, and I know that you saw the impact and the, the enormity of the work that she had to do and that they have to do. And Commander Wood really described very articulately all the roles and all the hats that we put on our probation officers in order to do and accomplish with that. And just with that, I just want to say again, the, the work, and we talked about recidivism, if you look at our recidivism rates, and I spoke to that in, in our budget presentation, we're dropping, we're getting lower, we're getting better at what we do, and that's because of the connections that we make, both with youth, with families, getting the youth to move forward, be successful, working really hard to identify what their needs are and making sure that we have those resources in the community. And again, I go back to that that's our probation officers and the work they do. I've been in this office as the director for only about eight months, but the work and the impression that I have and just the enormity of the work that they do, and, and how proud I am of the work that they do, really, I, I just can't say enough about how, how much I know that they work and how proud I am of the dedication and compassion that they have in what they do. So respectfully with the Sheriff's Office, we ask for this proclamation for June fifteenth through the twenty-first.
Yeah, if I may, thank you. Yeah, it's quite work. It's, I don't know how to describe the work that I've watched and doing, I actually did it right along with the sex offender unit on parole probation about a year ago, I think it's been, Jeff. Those, those men and women that are doing that work, I, I just, my hat's off because, I mean, we're all built to do different things, and they have to have special gifts and talents to be able to, to, to do that work. And, and you're right, I mean, just watching the interaction with the youth and the families, it wasn't just the youth, it was the interaction with the families and the youth, providing that support that she was giving them and making sure they were connected. You know, those are the things that, that the county does, and you know, I know John's over there, you know, always, we're always saying, people, you know, the public, how do we continue to, to let the public know? And I'm not sure we ever will, but making sure that we let our employees know that we appreciate the work that they do is really important, and I think this proclamation is just one little thing. But trying to get out there and, and shake their hands and saying thank you on a daily basis is, is important from, from us. And I know the leadership sitting here, and I see the sheriff out there, that the people that, that work in Marion County that do this, this really important work are, are recognized by that. And we understand the fact that we serve them, they don't serve us, and it's, it's a really honor to be able to, to do this proclamation today and, and to say thank you to those people. And I know we got a barbecue over in the, that, that, I think that's coming up, right?
Yes.
I didn't miss it this year.
No, you did not, Commissioner. It's coming up.
Barbecue to say thank you to.
I get to be the speaker.
Yes.
Good, because I just want to eat. I don't care about.
We will have wonderful food, sir.
Well, I just want to say thank you both for being here, and thank you for leading a group of people that are, just do a tremendous service to our community and, and to the county. And I've been working with Ashley Marshall in our office to get ready for our tenth annual, giving people a Second Chance Breakfast. That's going to be in October, October twenty-fifth. And we're going to do, because it's a tenth annual, we're going, kind of an anniversary one, we're going to do a retrospective of all, of many of the different people who have been featured in our videos and as speakers over the years. So Ashley was able to actually bring them in and have their, their pictures taken, well, thanks to Anna Whitlock, because she has them all on speed dial, and so she knows where they are, and so contacted them and came in. And so we found one for each year, and a couple times we found two. And then we're going to intersperse it with photos from SOAR of these different class activities and field trips and things that they've done. And on the one hand, I mean, Ashley told me that it was an inspiring assignment for her to do, that she really enjoyed doing it because she actually interviewed them and asked them what they were doing, and I asked her just to find any positive thing that she could write about them, you know, do they have a home, what's their family life like, do they have a job, you know, volunteering, that kind of thing. And the, the snippets that we have are. And the snippets that we have are indeed inspiring. And so there are many, many, many success stories. But I think it's important for us to acknowledge too, that there are some people that make poor choices after they've given this opportunity to turn their life around. And we're taking folks out of, you know, like, we're not using photographs to feature of people that have not continued to be successful. And as I'm looking at the ones that Anna is sending over, saying, "No, you can't use that one." And, "No, you can't," and some of them are such great pictures too, it just hurts my, it hurts me to have to pull them out of the queue. It also, it just, it saddens me to see what choices people make. And while our parole and probation officers need to be teachers, mentors, coaches, moral support, all of the things that you mentioned, they also have to recognize that there's a public safety aspect to what they do. And if people make those poor choices, they're going to be victims involved. And those assessments that you talk about, the science behind that, it's, well, it's not perfect. It's critical for us to make sure that we're not moving so much in the other direction that we're allowing people to prey on other people in our community. So that's a tough job to do. And, you know, to see a parole officer smiling next to a person, and then find out that person has made a poor choice and they're back in prison. It just, I mean, it broke my heart when I saw some of them, because I actually interviewed some of these young men when I was doing the videos on those different years, and to see that. So I just wanted to acknowledge that you have to be both public, that's why they are public safety officers, in addition to being people that are helping, hopefully, make good choices so that they continue on the straight and narrow.
Absolutely.
So that's all I wanted to say. So thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve a proclamation designating July 15th through the 21st, 2018, as National Parole and Probation Officers Week in Marion County.
And I will second the motion. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that's approved, and we have the proclamation in front of us. We actually have two copies, so do they get to take one? Well, does Troy get one? Okay, so why don't we give one to Troy and one to Jeff, and then we'll.
All right. Would you like me to read it?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, you can read part of it, let me read part of it too.
Right. You know me, I can't read that much anyway. In a matter of proclaiming the week of July 15th through the 21st, 2018, as Parole and Probation Officer Week. Whereas the Marion County Sheriff's Office parole and probation officers and Marion County Juvenile Department probation officers are an essential part of the Marion County criminal justice system. And whereas the parole and probation officers of Marion County play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Marion County. And whereas the parole and probation officers of Marion County recognize their duties to serve the people of Marion County by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, by supervision and monitoring the activities of adult and juvenile offenders living in Marion County, and?
Whereas the parole and probation officers of Marion County are trained professionals who provide services and referrals for offenders. And whereas the parole and probation officers of Marion County work in partnership with community agencies and groups. And whereas the parole and probation officers of Marion County promote prevention, intervention, and advocacy. And whereas the parole and probation officers of Marion County provide services, support, and protection for victims. And whereas the parole and probation officers of Marion County embrace evidence-based practices, utilize effective practices in community supervision, and are a true factor for positive change. And whereas it is important that all Marion County citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their parole and probation officers. Therefore, be it resolved that we, the Commissioners of Marion County, do hereby proclaim July 15th through 21st, 2018, as Parole and Probation Officer Week. And encourage all citizens to honor the parole and probation officers of Marion County and to recognize their achievements. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Commissioner Cameron, why don't you go ahead and sign, and then we can hand those over to our leaders here. Doesn't look like we have a lot of interest in our budget presentation. All right. So that concludes our action agenda. We have two public hearings, noticed at 9:30, so we're well after that notice period. The first one, both are under finance. The first is a public hearing to consider adopting the fourth supplemental budget for the fiscal year 2017-18. And Debbie Gregg is here with a PowerPoint presentation to walk us through that last supplemental budget.
That's right. Good morning, Debbie Gregg, Budget and Grants Manager of the Finance Department. Good morning, Commissioners. I am here to present the fourth and final supplemental budget for fiscal year 2017-18. Just wanted to do a few little highlights. So in accordance with local budget law, we have noticed this meeting. It was published last Friday on June 22nd in both the Statesman Journal and also on the Finance website. A public copy of the supplemental budget has been available at the Board's office, and again, also on the website. We did discuss with the Commissioners in detail the supplemental budget in a management update on June 18th. And I just wanted to mention, there was one change that happened since that meeting. We did increase the Sheriff's Office Grant Fund to recognize the entire Willamette Valley Community Health Grant. I believe that grant was about $83,000. We recognized about 74. There was a 10% retainage. So we'll be able to use half of those funds for expenses for social services contract through the end of this year. The remaining amount of those dollars, about $36,000, we have recorded in an unappropriated ending fund balance to be used for the next fiscal year. So 19 funds for the supplemental budget had modification. 11 of those increased, and then eight funds actually just had offsetting changes with no net budget change. The general fund changes I wanted to highlight. The contingency was reduced by $247,000. And that was to go for the Clerk's Office, whose election costs increased about $151,000 for some unscheduled elections this past year. Treasurer's Office increased in personal services by about $10,000 for some implementation of software training to the various departments. And we had general fund transfers of $86,000, $20,000 to the County Fair for some paving projects out at the fairgrounds that will trade in lieu of rent expense for future county fairs. And a facility renovation of $66,000 that will go towards a key card system in the juvenile courtroom. So in total, the supplemental budget increased approximately $3.9 million. Here's a quick summary of some of those increases. Just wanted to highlight a few of these also, some of the more significant ones. Environmental Services increased $1.8 million for their budget. And that was due to increase in tipping fees for a change in flow of basically how Public Works is doing the hauler waste. Health and Human Services increased almost a million, or just under that. The majority of that was some state revenue from Oregon Health Authority for some mental health and alcoholism, drug services revenue. Non-departmental grants increased, and that was in recognition of the reauthorization of the Secure Rural Schools funding. Same thing with Sheriff's Grants, part the Secure Rural Schools, part that grant that was awarded, and some increased charges for services. So in summary, that's, you have a resolution in front of you, I believe, with the detail behind it for the fourth supplemental for your consideration. If you have any questions?
No, we've seen this. Right.
No, the only thing I would add, I think there were a couple other questions that came up. One of them was on the fair. And Jeff White sent a detailed email about that. So it sounds like what we're doing with this year's money and next year's money is that all of them are going to future years. So we'll get free rent for future years. So it's still kind of a one-to-two ratio in terms of the deal. So it's not like we're putting in $120,000 to get $120,000 worth of free rent, so.
Exactly, yeah.
So that was, that was good. And then I was trying to understand whether or not we, the activity was going to happen within the fiscal year. And it sounds like even for those future years, it will happen right away, because they want the work to be done now. Because I was concerned about, we're not just hanging on to general fund and a budget for a future rent, but the work will happen, and then they'll get credit for subsequent years. Is that?
Exactly, that is exactly correct, yes.
Excellent, all right. I can't remember what the third question was that we asked, but I know it was resolved, so.
I can't, yeah.
Anyway. Thank you. Great work on this. And we win awards for our budget for a reason, and appreciate all of the staff work that goes into it.
Thank you.
So do we want to, are we going to keep the public hearing open, or?
We need to close the public hearing, and then we would adopt the fourth supplemental.
Okay, so Madam Chair, I'll move that we close the public hearing and approve the resolution to adopt the fourth supplemental budget for fiscal year 2017-18.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, fourth supplemental is adopted. Last item, under public hearings, we'll open a public hearing to consider adoption of the fiscal year 2018-19 budget. And John Latimer is coming down to sit in front of us and summarize two full days and months and months and months of work that are going into the budget for the upcoming year. Thank you, John.
And Debbie is here to help me with this, so we'll move right along. I thought I'd start with, there you go, with some of the things we talked about during our budget hearing. Since this is the 150th year of, or 175th year of Marion County, some of our folks did some research. And it was rather interesting, some of the things that happened to get Marion County going. This first item is the minutes of the Willamette Settlers Meeting in Shempui to vote on the formation of a provisional government. And this says, and I'll read it because it's hard to read. "At a public meeting of the inhabitants of Willamette Settlement, held in accordance with the call of the committee chosen at a former meeting for the purpose of taking steps to organize themselves into a civil community and provide themselves with the protection secured by law and order." I think that last part of that statement is what we continue to do today. And that's why I wanted to read it. This is a picture of the gathering at Shempui on May 2nd, 1843. And the interesting thing about that meeting, that it was a close vote on whether to have the settlement or not. It was a 52-50 vote. So what they did then was they, you had an organization of the Oregon County, country into four districts. And that's in this map, Towalde, Yam Hill, Clackamas, and Shempui. And it went to the, to the Rocky Mountains, so it was a big area. It's interesting to note that Marion County had a large number of officials, some of whom we don't have elected any longer. For example, we don't have a Superintendent of Education. Education in Oregon is now not under counties, but under school districts. But you can see in this picture that, and I don't have a picture here. What did I do with it? Okay. There's a recorder, a deputy recorder, deputy county clerks, a treasurer, school superintendent, surveyor. The surveyor was elected, and at a vote of the people in Marion County, the surveyor is no longer elected. And of course, there's a sheriff, commissioners, a clerk. And the interesting thing is that back then, we had a judge who ran the county with two commissioners. And now we no longer have a county judge, but we have three commissioners. It's interesting when you start comparing budgets back in, this is a budget, receipts and expenditures from 1863, and it's hard to read. But you had in that early 1863 receipts of $11,340.46. Big budget. They had grocery licenses of $750, ferry fees of $167, courthouse rent of $125. And the expenditures for the year were $700 for the county judge, 107 for two county commissioners, and 958 for sheriff services. 259 of those were for boarding prisoners, plus 438 for a prosecuting attorney. An allocation of $2,287 for the support of paupers. So we were providing Health and Human Services even back then. And of course, the surveyor and road supervisor were also funded in this budget.
What was the year of that?
1863.
Thank you.
1843?
63. That's where, that's as far back as we could find.
I see, okay, all right.
Receipts and expenditures.
Oh, there it is, okay, 1863, I see.
So moving right along, we're going to do a recap of the budget for you, for you to adopt. Now, the total budget that we're asking to adopt today In 1863, it was $12,480. So we've come a long way.
So what is that in today's dollars?
Right there, I just, I Googled it.
So it's $240,000, so it's still, yeah, we've come a long way.
We've come a long way. The interesting thing about this, there's $101.8 million in the general fund. Now, the general fund is the only fund that can be spent for any purpose, legal purpose, anyway. And so that leaves $383,070.252 for all those other funds, 36 funds, including the general fund. And those other funds, the $383 million, are dedicated dollars. And for people who don't understand fund accounting as used in government, those other funds are dedicated. They can only be used for the purposes that they're dedicated for. That's why we use separate other funds. We also have requirements in, the Board has requirements in our financial rules and regulations requiring that we have reserves. And so our reserves for this budget are 10.1% of adjusted general fund resources. We also have a permanent tax rate that provides most of the dollars for the general fund of 3.0252 of 1,000 of assessed value. That permanent tax rate has been permanent since I've been here for 15 years. We've never upped it, and I don't see us doing that in the near future. This is the same rate we've always had. We have added 28 FTE in this budget for a total of $1,510.17. One of the important things that people talk about around the state is the increasing cost of PERS. We spend $24 million on PERS alone in our budget. We're also in this budget providing an assessment of $900,000 for future costs. And I think it's interesting to see that 10 years ago, PERS cost 8.3 million. So we're seeing this increase. Now, we think that it's going to increase probably 5% every biennium in the future, unless changes are made. Our health insurance, and we tend not to talk about this as much as PERS, but it's more expensive. more expensive, and we provide health insurance for our employees at 20, almost 26 million. And again, 10 years ago, it was 13.8 million. In terms of the budget, the big budgets we have, one of the things, as I said earlier, our general fund of $101 million, 78% of that is spent on public safety, and that includes the sheriff, juvenile, and the DA, among others. We also have a justice court. With this budget, we have budgeted the $10 fee in the East Salem Service District to provide 10 additional deputies for East Salem. It's interesting to note that that East Salem area in the county, outside of the city of Salem, is as big in population as the city of Kaiser. So it's a large area, and it's an area where most of our sheriff's calls come from. So with this $10 fee, we'll be able to add 10 additional deputies in that area 24/7. We're also adding a deputy to patrol, for Forest Patrol, and our other large budget is the Department of Public Works. And in, working on roads and bridges, which is one of their large functions, they will be stabilizing 15 miles of gravel roads. This has been a big issue in Marion County with, with people drive too fast on those gravel roads, and they get, they get very bumpy and lots of holes, so they're going to work on keeping those stable. They're going to be chip sealing 94.3 miles, and including 18.3 under the Federal Land Access Program, and that's by and large on the North Fork Road. 25 miles of road resurfacing, and they're planning to work on two bridges resurfacing. In terms of capital improvements, which is another large part of our budget, of 29 million, we're going to build a new juvenile administration building, finish the sheriff's public safety building, we've got $1 million for transitional housing, multi-year facility renovations for $3.8 billion, IT equipment and systems for $9.7 million, and then we have reserves and contingency of $900,000. It's because of the loans to do this, among others, we have a debt service of $6.2 million that helps pay for our, this building, of which we bonded many years ago, and also a debt service for our PERS liability. Now I'm going to let Debbie go through the process with the budget.
I'm sharing the mic today. So just quickly, you mentioned earlier, it takes a long time to actually get here. Just wanted to recap the budget process. This all begins really back in December with the establishment of our budget parameters, which we present to the commissioners at a management update, like I said, back in December. That really sets the foundation for the departments to start preparing their budgets. We communicate things like medical and dental premium costs, PERS costs, and other things that will help them prepare their budgets. We do request that capital budgets are due in January. It takes a while to kind of compile those and summarize those so that we can discuss them as a budget team. The departments present their budget to the budget officer and the budget team in March, where we're able to ask questions, and they can present their decision packages and any changes from the prior year budget. The budget officer develops his budget, along with his budget message, and presents that at the Budget Committee meeting on June 5. And as you said earlier, our Budget Committee meeting was about a day and a half, so we were able to listen to all the 15 departments present their budgets. You overheard over 97 programs that they presented, and like John said, over 36 funds. The Budget Committee approved the taxes and the budget on June 7. There was a budget note that was prepared that day, which I just wanted to communicate that has been documented, and that we will follow up and present on in next year's budget. Today's budget hearing was properly noticed in accordance with local budget law on June 14, and has been available for public review in the board's office and on the county website. And I just wanted to also mention that we do adopt our budget by fund, so in the resolution attached to it is a summary of all the budgets by fund, by department, listing their appropriation
Speaking of the budget team, and they're a great group that we have that helps me put this budget together, as the budget officer, I could not do this by myself, although my deputy, Jan Fritz, and I did it for a number of years all by ourselves, but we ended up working weekends and holidays in order to get it done. So let me thank the budget team for all their hard work. Jan Fritz, who's the Deputy County Administrative Officer, Jeff White, our CFO, and Debbie here, who is our budget and grants manager, has been doing a great job. Daniel Datto, a budget analyst, Alicia Henry, a management analyst, Cindy Johnson, our senior administrative services manager in the board's office, does, keeps track of all of our CIPs, and Cynthia Granateer, who is our chief accountant and makes sure that the numbers all add up and are in the right place. So I thank them because they did a lot of hard, hard work. In addition, you saw all those historic numbers and pictures. There was a group, a research team, that worked long and hard to pull these numbers out of some of the clerks' rather old documents, and so I'd like to thank them. Frank Milton with Clerk's Office, who keeps track of all those records, and we have records going back to the 1860s that we were able to pull from. Michelle Miller Harrington from the Law Library, Jan Fritz, Jolene Kelly, who's in the board's office as our public information officer, and of course, the ever-famous Hitesh Parak, who does everything for the board of commissioners. So, Madam Chair, Commissioner, I'd like to present this budget to you for adoption, a total budget of $445,424,664 in 36 funds, with a general fund of $101.8 million, and a tax rate, a permanent rate of 3.0252 per 1,000. And if you have any questions, I'm sure Debbie can answer them.
That was a good motion you just made, John. Madam Chair, for me, so I know we got to participate in the budget hearings as a budget committee, and so we've been through a lot of this. There was one question, I think, that related back to the supplemental budget and this budget, and Jeff, who just walked in, Jeff answered it for me. We had that extra $60,000 in the fair, excuse me, on a $400 million budget, I was picking on $60,000, John, but I was trying to figure that out, and he clarified that in his email to say that that's basically in anticipation for another agreement with the Oregon State Fair to do some more paving, so that's why it was in there, we weren't doing it twice. So thank you for clarifying that. Madam Chair, you want me to make a motion here?
Sure.
I'll move that we close the public hearing and adopt the, and consider, or, and adopt the fiscal year 2018-19 budget.
And I'll second your motion, and just to make a couple comments on this. First of all, thank you, John, for the presentation. I love the way that we're intertwining history this year with the budget. It's nice to look back and see how far Marion County has come, and what our roots are and all of that, and just a nice year of celebration, and this is, we heard about the fair and what they're doing, and this is just another way for us to honor that. You did mention about education not being under Marion County, and it's interesting when I go to the National Association of Counties, and I served on the Human Services and Education Steering Committee for a number of years, there are a lot of states where education still is under counties, and so.
Particularly on the east coast.
Yeah, right, so you, so they, just a very different scope of work that they have in terms of dealing with schools in addition to the many things that we deal with. Also want to thank everyone that you thanked, in terms of the staff that we have doing the work, and our finance department, and our Board of Commissioners office, and also throughout all of the departments, many, many people doing a lot of work to get this budget together, and our budget committee, our three volunteers that serve on that committee that take time out of their busy lives and come over here and sit in the hearing room and listen to presentations for an entire day. We've gotten so much more efficient in our publications that we're doing. We haven't mentioned this this year, but we have in other years, that we used, the first year I was here, we had, what, a notebook for every department, I think, of Marion County, so we had like 20 notebooks and.
Oh, my gosh.
Right. We're bringing in carts and carts and carts and things, and to be able to get it down and actually, it becomes the budget document, which, what a great idea that was. Whoever figured that out, was that rich that figured that out? Somebody did, anyway. It's for us to be able to do that. And then we have a very prudent budget. I mean, we just have done an excellent job budgeting, keeping track of expenditures. I think part of it really, and when you were talking about, Debbie, the departments coming, and I don't sit in those meetings as the commissioner when the budgets are first brought forward, and I know that there probably are some hopes that things get funded, and then people walk away disappointed because they get met with less enthusiasm than what they have as a department. But at the same time, I think back over the years that I've been here, and the fact that we have such excellent leaders in our departments, and such great cooperation that we work on as a county, I mean, it's done with great civility, people are willing to give, people are understanding when, you know, this isn't the time for that to move forward. People are creative and thinking, okay, here's a problem we're trying to solve. This idea that had a fairly large price tag, we can't do, but maybe we can figure out another way to solve the problem. I see that all the time, every day, and particularly as we go through this budget. So again, I just want to say, congratulations, thank you, and you're commended for this great work that you do for Marion County.
Before you adopt the budget, I was going to say something I forgot to say. Tammy talked about the fair. In the early 1860s, the state fair was in, and she did say this, was in Oregon City, but it went broke. And so Marion County appropriated $80,000 to buy the fairgrounds you have here now in Marion, in Salem. And so the state fair is really the Marion County fair.
Right. They needed a better lawyer when they put that agreement together, is what I would say. They probably didn't have Jane back then, so.
No, they didn't.
Right, so the fact is that it got transferred over to, the fairgrounds got given to the state for the state fair, and there were, there were some provisions in there for a time that the Marion County Agricultural Society could continue using it for their fair, but there was an end date to that, and they didn't renegotiate it. And so I tried to make that argument a number of years back when we were.
At the legislature?
No, when the state fair was under the parks, and we had a series of state parks directors, and the price went from, I've told this a million times, but it was $40,000 for the four-day event in 2003, when I joined the fair board, and within, I think, three or four years, it was going to be $80,000, and I went, ah, that's enough, we're not spending $80,000 for a four-day event. So we went over there to negotiate, and I brought the copy of the deed with me and said, hey, we actually own these fairgrounds. They were like, eh, you gave those up a long time ago.
So, Madam Chair, I know we're going off on a rabbit trail here about the fairgrounds, but being on the Oregon State Fair Council in the last four years, there's some other agreements that didn't get really hammered out between the armory and the fairgrounds and DAS, and who really owns all that property, and so that's been a whole nother issue as well. So we're just thankful that we get to use it, and we get to do the trade-out now, and I'm glad that you took the deed over there, and we kept it at 40,000, yeah.
All right, so we have exhausted this subject. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. The budget is adopted for 2018-19.
Part of your actions here also is a requirement to adopt the tax rate of 3.0252 and adopt that.
So that is in the resolution also. Did we, did your motion say that we were going to approve the budget or approve the resolution adopting the budget?
He said the budget.
I said adoption of the fiscal year budget.
Okay, why don't we make a second motion and adopt the tax rate, just so we are covered here.
Yeah, let me go back up here where it is, so, there it is. Madam Chair, I'll move that we adopt the general fund permanent rate of $3.0252 per thousand.
And I'll second your motion. Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. We've adopted the tax rate, and we have adopted the budget, and they're both included in a resolution that we will sign shortly. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your work, everybody.
All right, so this concludes our meeting.
Go on vacation until December.
I will read the Wednesday to Wednesday calendar. These are meetings where two or three commissioners will be present between June 27 and July 4, 2018. We just completed our board session on June 27, Wednesday. The Marion County Justice Reinvestment Council meeting that is on this notice has been canceled on June 28. And so everybody there has been invited to attend the Legislative Work Group on Reentry Employment and Housing that's from 2 to 4 tomorrow, Thursday, June 28, in Hearing Room C at the Oregon State Capitol. On July 2, Monday, at 8:30, will be our weekly calendar review in the Silverton Conference Room on the 5th floor here at Courthouse Square, followed by management update at 9, same place. The Public Safety Coordinating Council Planning Meeting that was scheduled at 11 has also been canceled on July 2. And then on July 4, just a note that it is Independence Day, a holiday, and Marion County offices will be closed. And that's our short calendar for the week. Anything else for the good of the order?
No, it's always a good holiday, good time to celebrate. Yeah, so no board session next week.
No board session next week.
And you're, you're gonna, you gonna go visit your son, or your grandson?
I, my grandson's having surgery in St. Louis, so I'm flying there to support my daughter while he's having surgery on his feet, so.
Good. I got to spend this weekend with my grandson and my grandson-to-be, it was good, and then my other grandson's going to come up next weekend, so.
Yeah, I saw your pictures on Facebook, those are pretty cute.
That's great. All right.
So with that, we will adjourn.